I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, held on March 20th, 2012, at 6:00 PM at the Cottonwood Council Chambers. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Dowling.
Here.
Councilmember Alinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Howdege. Councilmember Norman.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Vice Mayor Piper.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here, thank you. Our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, and we have the Commander from the Burt Black VFW post, 7400, did I get that right? Ron Luce.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item, and we have a certificate for you, Mr. Luce, but we'll give that to you after your little presentation that you'll do. Okay. So we'll just have you explain all of this when we do the proclamation, how's that? Okay, thank you. The next item is a brief summary of current events by Mayor, City Council, and/or City Manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, or deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, the only thing I have to report, and this is probably more for the public's interests, as I know the Council is already aware, our Fire Chief, Mike Casson, plans to retire on May 23rd, and so we'll be looking at an interim position for a while, but we wish Mike the very best, and we'll have some type of a public celebration for his retirement.
Okay.
And that's it, Madam Mayor.
Thanks. Councilmembers?
Nothing this week.
Okay. I just wanted to make the announcement that on March 31st, the Verde Valley Senior Center is sponsoring their March a Mile for Meals, and the march actually starts at 9:00 AM, but you can register at 8:00. And Councilmembers are invited to participate, and hopefully, community members can set up teams also. This is a really important event. It helps feed seniors in our community, and it provides a hot meal and a nutritious meal every day. And I actually am helping a senior right now, and she's just gotten Meals on Wheels, and it's amazing how much better she feels, so I just am seeing firsthand how much this program works. And a lot of times, and I think even in this case, the only person that this elder sees all day, maybe all week, is the person who brings their meal. So it really is an important program, and I hope that we can rally around together as a community and support this event. On March 9th, I attended the viewing for Councilmember Kirby, and then I attended the retirement party for Kathy Davis. She was the, do you all know Kathy Davis? She was the Superintendent of Parks, National Parks here. We'll really miss her. She was a great superintendent, she was always in the community, working together, she cared a lot about the Verde River, and worked really hard towards those ends. On March 10th, I attended the Clemensaw Centennial Fashion Show, and there were a lot of the old-time families that were modeling clothes from 100 years back. And it was interesting that I sat right next to Anna McDonald, I just happened to sit down by her. And I met her, and she was so cute, she was, every time, she had graduated from Clemensaw School, and every time, one of the people, we had three and four generations of, you know, families that were modeling, like the Grossettas and the Goddards and those families, and Anna would say, "I know them, I know her, I know him," and it was just really sparking memories for her. And I was so sad, a couple of days later, I read in the newspaper that she had passed away two days after that. But it was, it is a family that's lived here for many, many years, Anna was 94 years old, and she and her husband ran the Verde Valley Hardware here in town for many, many years. So our condolences to the family. And then after the fashion show, there were quite a few city employees, and the Mayor, or the Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Norman, all attended Mr. Kirby's funeral at Faith Lutheran Church. On March 15th, I met with Leonard Miller, who works for the Cottonwood Oak Creek School District, and he, we're all working on a Teacher Appreciation Week, the first week of May. And what we're really heading, or wanting to do is just thank all of the teachers in the area for what they do, and this won't be just one school, it'll be charter schools and school, the high school, all the schools, so we're hoping to make that a big deal. On March 16th, I attended the Yavapai County Mayor's Manager Supervisor Nation and Tribe Meeting, and what they talked about, Tom Thurman, County Supervisor, talked about regional economic cooperation. Melissa Preston from the Camp Verde Economic Department was there to talk because Casey Rooney was out of town, so she did share some information about what Mr. Rooney is doing with the new loan, revolving loan program to help businesses, and so that was very interesting. And then we had an update on parks with Jay Rehm from State Parks. And the 17th was the Flywheelers Show, my husband's involved in tractor pull, and that was lots of fun this year in the community. That's my report to Council. All right, the next item is a proclamation, Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. We have with us tonight some people to honor Vietnam veterans, and I believe that our own Councilmember, Ruben Howdege, is a Vietnam veteran too.
Right.
Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day, March 30th, 2012. Whereas the Vietnam War was fought in the Republic of South Vietnam from 1961 to 1975, and involved North Vietnamese regular forces and Vietcong guerrilla forces in armed conflict with United States Armed Forces and the Army of the Republic of Vietnam. And whereas, by the end of 1965, there were 80,000 United States troops in Vietnam, and by 1969, a peak of approximately 5,043,000 troops was reached. And whereas, it is time for all of us, in the spirit of pride and gratitude, to recall the heroic accomplishments of the 58,195 servicemen and women, whose names are listed on the Vietnam Memorial Wall. And whereas, we also wish to recognize the 623 men and women from the great state of Arizona, who gave the ultimate sacrifice, and thank them for their unselfish duty and devotion. And whereas, on March 30th, 1973, the United States Armed Forces completed the withdrawal of combat units and combat support units from South Vietnam. And whereas, on March 30th, 2012, we believe it would be an appropriate day to honor those members of the United States Armed Forces who served with a Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. Now therefore, I Diane Jones, Mayor of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, on behalf of the Cottonwood City Council, do hereby proclaim March 30th, 2012, as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day in Cottonwood, Arizona, and call upon all citizens to honor and recognize the contribution of veterans who served in the United States Armed Forces in Vietnam during war and during peace, and to encourage the people of Cottonwood to observe Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day with appropriate ceremonies and activities that, A, provide the appreciation Vietnam War veterans deserve but did not receive upon returning home from the war, and B, demonstrate the resolve that never again shall the nation disregard or denigrate a generation of veterans. And at this time, Commander Luce has some information to share with us about an event that we are, that he and others are planning for March 30th.
First, I would like to thank the Mayor and the City Council here for this proclamation, it's long overdue. What we are planning this year, and I hope that Cottonwood will take the lead on it for next year, it is Verde Valley Recognition of all Vietnam veterans. It's Welcome Home, all Vietnam veterans of the Verde Valley. The process for the day of the 30th will begin with a flag raising at Clarkdale, in the park, at 10:45, and then the motorcyclists, there should be Vietnam Veterans Association motorcycles, VFW riders, American Legion riders, Patriot Guard riders. There's some coming from as far away as Yuma, Tucson, and Prescott Valley to do this ride, and the ride is intended to leave Clarkdale at 11:00 AM, and come down through Old, 89A through Old Town, and then out, and then over to 260 and down to Camp Verde, and then from Camp, and take a loop through Camp Verde, and then back out on the I-17, up to 179 through Village Oak Creek, and then on up to Sedona to Posse Grounds Park. And that's where this event will be held. The honor guard from the VFW, as well as the American Legion, will be posting colors at 1:00 PM on the 30th, at Posse Grounds Park. There will be a picnic, we're looking for donations yet, food, help in any way, I'm still looking for some cooks, by the way, if there's anybody here loves to grill, we're gonna have burgers and hot dogs, and of course, this ride is to escort Vietnam veterans through the valley and to end up at the Posse Park. But everybody is invited, I gave you cards here, and if anybody sitting back here behind me wants a card, I can give them that as well. But I thank you very much for honoring the Vietnam veterans in this way.
Thank you. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Bartosz? You've been working with Mr. Ernstur in Sedona on this.
Just Madam Mayor, that we are, I guess, gonna provide some escorts for the motorcycle ride, I think we're also working with them on some food. The other thing that might be of interest, I don't know how widely you want to advertise this, but that is Arizona Bike Week, and we have some of our staff going down to the Arizona Bike Week function, and we could pass out cards down there to see if any of the riders, particularly the veterans, would like to come up here and participate in this.
Yes.
Absolutely. I could probably use them.
Thank you.
You betcha.
Thank you very much.
All right, and we do have a certificate for you, Commander. So we would like to give you this proclamation, and thank the VFW for your work and your leadership in making this happen. And also, we have just a certificate for you.
How do you turn it back?
A little black chart right here. Sorry about that. The flash present I was going on, I just want to say thank you for objecting and for appreciating the Vietnam veterans. I know my husband is a Vietnam veteran, and so I have kind of lived the life of living with the person who was over there, and didn't really ever talk about it much for maybe 35 years or before the years in the area, but now we will talk about it a little bit.
It is.
But it is, I'm glad that they're giving recognition, they want to do some pretty hard kinds of things.
And I would like to thank one more thank you, I know it's well overdue, for the display case where our uniforms in the VFW post area is completed, and I have the flag up on top of it now, so all of the members of the council are invited to come and bow to our post and see the display and see the flag that was raised. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, possibly a good time to go down and see it would be the Mary Stein Memorial, which I know is being held next Monday, next Monday.
A good thing to also mention, but the law is very different in our community, do you want to share a little bit about that?
Well, just, Mary Stein is the daughter of one of our police dispatchers, and for the last four years has fought a variety of medical ailments, and spent enormous amount of time in hospitals, and we've done fundraisers to help support the family, and the reason we did the Employee Vacation Donation Program was to support Lana and her family, and unfortunately, Mary finally succumbed to her, to her medical conditions here just recently, and the family is holding memorial service at the VFW on Monday, and I believe it's at 6, 7?
Yes.
6 o'clock at the VFW, so everybody's welcome, I think there's a potluck that they're doing as well, and so if you'd like to bring food, that would be great, participate in the meal.
Okay, thank you very much.
And she was, just to mention, this illness started when she was 14, she was 18 when she passed away.
Our condolences to the family, it's very hard to lose a child. All right, the next item is Presentation Regarding the Coconino National Forest Travel Management Rule by Jody Nickerson, the Off-Highway Vehicle Program Coordinator.
Mayor, Councilmen. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. Again, my name is Jody Nickerson, I am the Off-Highway Vehicle Program Coordinator for the Red Rock District on the Coconino. Also, I am travel management liaison for the district as well. I'm here tonight because the travel management for the Forest Service means changes in how we travel on the forest, and it's important that we make sure that our local users of the forest understand what that means and what's changing. So I believe you all have this flyer, I'll be going through that, giving a little more detail on that, and then any questions. I did also, hopefully, everyone in the, behind me has one as well, so they know what I'm talking about. But to get started with a little bit of history on travel management, in 2005, the Washington Office of the Forest Service mandated that all Forest Service lands and grasslands across the country adopt a travel management rule. Travel management rule at its pure basic point is that no more cross-country travel. So in the Sedona-Red Rock area, most of us know that cross-country travel hasn't been permitted since 1998, I believe it was, however, other portions of the forest have not had that, and cross-country travel has been permitted. However, this is all changing, so it's not just the Coconino, there's been headlines that the forest is closing, we're not granting access, it's only the Coconino, but it's all Forest Service lands, it's, we're not closing, we're not closing access, we just need to change our travel rules just a little bit to protect the resource a little better. So the Prescott on this side of the Verde River has had their travel management rule in effect since '09, so just to, a lot of people don't realize that. The Kaibab, the Williams District of the Kaibab adopted their travel management rule this past June, and then the Tucion District, just below the south rim of the canyon, adopted theirs in September, so it is coming to all forests nearby and across the country. So cross-country travel is not allowed, everyone needs to be on a designated road, trail, or area. When I say designated, I mean it's on this motor vehicle use map that will be coming out in April, so next month, it's right now going through the review process, so it'll soon be printed. Anything that is on that map, and it's only gonna be motorized roads, motorized trails, and motorized areas, similar to Hayfield Draw down the road here, the Coconino has one area like that, but it's up towards Flagstaff, so that's what I mean by areas. When it's on that map, that's designated, if a road is not on the map, it's non-designated. So a little bit about the map, you might have seen the Prescott map, it's the big white map that's kind of cumbersome, but it is the protocol that that's the map we use, and so it'll be very similar to that, except with Coconino information. It is free to the public, so I'm gonna repeat that it's free to the public, it's, I get that question a lot. It's also going to be reprinted every year, so when I say reprinted every year, I don't mean we're gonna be printing the same map every year, every year there's gonna be slight changes. As Off-Highway Vehicle, Off-Highway Vehicle Program Coordinator, I am responsible for also trail planning, et cetera, so maybe we get some motorized trails, some new trails on the forest, maybe camping corridors are added, maybe there's a mistake because we're human and we make mistakes, and there's a road that shouldn't be, or a road that's not on the map that should be, or vice versa, so there'll be changes to the map every year. The, as far as the nitty-gritty, talk about camping, we are currently in areas where people can travel off-road, dispersed camping has kind of taken on a life of its own, we now will have camping corridors, within those camping corridors, people must stay with their vehicle, so their vehicle must stay within 300 feet of the roadside edge in camping corridors. There's, on the map, the legend will tell you, but it's, there'll be dots on either side of the road, if there's dots on only one side, the odds are really good there's a meadow on the other side, we prefer people not to camp in meadows, because one person camping one night in a meadow does a lot of damage and leaves a very big mark. So, but for the most part, these camping corridors generally are on two sides, both sides of the road, and there's over 600 miles of camping corridor across the forest. Anywhere that is outside of a camping corridor, you can still park within 30 feet of the roadside edge, so we're not saying you can't, you have to park in those camping corridors as well, we're just saying that you have to park within 30 feet of the roadside edge. Again, that's without resource damage being done. A quick definition of resource damage is rutting, so if someone goes out after a nice monsoon storm, or maybe the weather we just had, and pulls off the road and creates some really deep ruts, those ruts are gonna be there for a long time, does a lot of damage to the soils, causes erosion, et cetera. So that's resource damage, also driving over trees and vegetation, like cactus, that have a hard time growing in this environment, but, you know, takes a while, that can all be considered resource damage. So people need to, and that's kind of the rule right now too, so that, there's no change with that. I want to also, with camping, this only applies to motorized camping, so when I say 300 feet from the roadside edge, that means that's where your vehicle has to go. But if someone wants to still camp with a tent, a tarp, what have you, they can still walk into the forest and camp where they will, that is not restricted. The game retrieval that you see there, game retrieval is during hunting season, people going and retrieving their game. Motorized game retrieval only applies to elk in certain game units now, on the Coconino. The game unit closest to us is 6A, so that game unit 6A, 6B, 7East, 7West, and 8 are all units that people can travel one mile off a designated road with one vehicle per animal, per elk, I should say. Retrieval with motorized means of any other animal is not permitted anywhere in those units or anywhere else on the forest. So the other units, and they're primarily on the eastern side of the forest, 5A, 5BN, and I, 11M, and one other I can't remember, I'm sorry, those have no motorized game retrieval at all, and all of this has been done with public comment and working with Arizona Game and Fish and research, et cetera, so. Permitted use is exempt, this is a big thing that I want to make sure people understand, because a lot of people heat their homes with firewood, you have to get a permit to get firewood on the forest, therefore, it's a permitted use. You can still use your vehicle to gather firewood. However, and this is the case now, you're, you can't go driving through the forest looking for your firewood, you have to locate your firewood, and then you can drive into it without causing resource damage, cut it, load it, and drive out the same way without causing resource damage. So that is still allowed and applicable to the forest uses. Also, another means of permitted use is all the businesses that operate on the forest, so anyone who is an outfitter and a guide, you know, are, whether it's packers or whoever is operating on the forest, they, they all need a special use permit to operate a business on the forest, and those are considered permitted uses as well. So if it's within their permit to do such and such, but it's not on the motor vehicle use map, they are allowed to do that because they have that in their permit. But we have worked really hard over the years to make sure that the permit, the permities coincide with what we've got on the map, but there are some circumstances where it varies, so. As far as what we're doing with signing, we have to follow national protocol or policy with signing, so all roads will be signed the same way. We've got those horizontal signs that have the numbers on them, they will all have a number on it. There will not be a closed or open sign on it. What, what it, the process will be is you're driving through the forest, you see a road, you see the number, you look up, look it up on the map, because everyone's gonna need to travel with the map, myself, yourself, Mayor, and if it's not on the map, you can't travel on that road, if it's on the map, you can travel on that road. Now, a lot of people say that doesn't make sense, et cetera, et cetera, and, you know, it's gonna take some time, but the background behind this is because in the past, the Forest Service has tried, okay, okay, all roads are open unless signed to close. Well, there's my favorite road, and there's a closed sign. Well, I'll just get my winch and pull the sign, and now I'm looking at an open road, and I'm, and everyone else behind me is looking at an open road. Or vice versa, all, the Forest Service has tried, all roads are closed unless signed open. Well, my favorite hunting spot, my favorite picnic spot is down this road. I don't want people going there, so I'm going to pull that open sign, and now I know it's open, but the other folks don't. So, this is how they have tried to mitigate this problem, and it's not just, it's not a Verde Valley problem, it's a national problem of signs disappearing on the land. So, now we have this map that is our law book. If it's on the map, that's what you can do with a motorized vehicle. Also, I'm starting planning processes for motorized trails in the Verde Valley, the Verde Valley Trail Project. Scoping will begin next month, so I'll be sending out emails to that regard to get some trails going in the Verde Valley. I can get you guys more information on that when we get that letter out. But there are these projects going on. Also, if people see that there is a problem with the map, not necessarily not being able to read it, but more that, well, this road doesn't go like that, or that road's not actually in existence, just little mistakes that we make, or maybe there's a road that's signed one thing on the ground but different on the map. The website, the Coconino website, has a form. Please let us know because we will go right out there and make sure that that road sign gets changed to match what's on the map, because it's a lot easier to change a sticker than a database. And I think for the most part, that about covers it. I'm sure I'm over my time, I'm terribly sorry.
That's fine. Okay, so are there any questions or comments from the council?
Nope.
Vice Mayor?
We get a lot of people in Chamber of Commerce. In fact, we've had three in the last two days wanting to know where the motorized trails are. Could you get the Chamber, Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce a copy of this flyer?
Yeah, absolutely.
Get with Christian there, because we have a lot of people come in there and ask.
Okay, I actually, I know Christian, I've, yep, I have the email, so, yep, I can do that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any comments from the public? Okay. I know I attended some of these meetings, and it has been quite a lengthy process. And I guess, in a way, there's part of me that's very sad that we have to get to this point, and there's a part of me that says the National Forest belongs to the citizens of the United States, and then there's the other part of me that understands that we're more and more people, especially in the West, and that we are impacting the forest. But I'm still sad to see it come to this, but I understand.
Yeah, I completely agree with all your sentiments. One last thing I did forget to mention is that the maps will be available, the date is yet to come. It is going to be April, but we need to send it to the printer in order to have a set date. But when it is available, it will be available at the district offices, and we're hoping to be able to distribute it to local businesses. But also, most importantly, it will be available online. And there are actually apps that you can download it to your smartphone or your Garmin GPS.
Right.
And a lot of people aren't sure about maps these days, but they know about those smartphones. I don't have a smartphone or a GPS, so I'm stuck with the paper copy. The other thing that we're trying to do is make it so that people can just print out eight and a half by 11 sections of the map, because very few people have a plotter at home. So, that way, if you're going to a certain place on the forest, you can print out that section, and it's far easier to manage, so.
That was my question that I was going to ask, will it be online?
It is online.
That's good. Well, that's great to think, will you have iPad apps or just smartphones?
Right now, I, right now, the information that I have is Garmin GPS and, let's see, where is it? iPad, iPhone, and Androids.
Great, that'll cover a lot of territory.
Yes, so that'll certainly make it easier for people to use.
All right, well, thank you very much for your time, and we appreciate being, getting some more knowledge on this process and where it ended up, and this is televised, so hopefully it will get the word out to lots and lots of folks.
I hope so, and please feel free to contact me if you have any questions. I'm at the Red Rock Ranger Station.
Okay, so it's Jody Nickerson?
Yep.
And how do they reach you?
You can just call the Red Rock office and just, you can say, Jody, you can say, OHV question, you can say, travel management question, they all get routed to me.
Okay, just call the Red Rock Ranger Station.
Yep, that'll work.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
Okay, the next item is item number eight, called, or item number seven, called to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action, per ARS 38431O2H, and comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak about an item not on the agenda? Mr. Alafant?
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Council, Bob Alafant, 330 Desperado Drive in Cottonwood. I have in front of me a very short article from the Verde Independent of February 21st, and in it, the city manager states, or told the reporter, that the city was outbid by the Verde Valley Medical Center during the recent trustee sale for a new city hall. That's what the article says. And I'm asked a number of questions about this, and rather than pass on my impression, I would ask that the city accurately provide answers to these questions if it could. First of all, there seems to be some confusion as to whether the city did or did not bid. That's the first question. Second, if the city did bid, when was that bid authorized by the council? The next question is, who voted on the council for and against making such an offer? Then I'm asked, what did Cottonwood actually bid? What was the amount of the bid that the city placed on the rough-cut facility? And finally, where in the city's current budget was the money coming from? So, if the city did bid on the project, citizens would ask that there be a very clear statement in response to these questions, and I'm sure several others that many of you have received. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Okay, item number eight, approval of minutes, strategic planning meeting of January 23rd, 2012, and regular meeting of March 6th, 2012. On the strategic planning meeting of January 23rd, hang on just a second, let me get there. I just had one possible correction on that, and I'm trying to find where it is. Just a second. The city clerk and I talked about this today. I forget where it is. Was it, okay, then I'm way too far. Thank you for your help on that. Oh, opening statement, okay. Gotcha, that was right at the beginning of the meeting. Okay, yeah, thank you very much. Opening statement on the second paragraph, and this is page one of the minutes, just said, she reviewed the reasons why the city had not cut staff positions during the down economic time, and I would just ask that you check the recording, and I think more along the line of what I said was that the city manager had frozen 12 positions, but we did not have to let anybody go. So, if you could just check on that and make that small correction, I'd appreciate it. And that was all I had on both sets of minutes. Are there any other suggestions or comments? If not, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second. Okay, does, do you need them to say with the correction, or is that okay?
With the, with the correction, the opening statement of the strategic retreat.
Second. Okay. So, Mr. Ilinski made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I just want to say thank you for those minutes, they were long ones, and I know how much time they must have taken, but they were really good. And I think it's a really good record of, you know, what we talked about and what our goals are, so thank you. We can always refer back to that if we need to. All right, unfinished business, item number nine is the contract extension with Traffic Safety, Inc. for city street striping services. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Morgan Scott, Development Services Operations Manager. You will remember that at the last council meeting, we brought council the, forward the option, or we asked council to consider renewing the contract for the current street striping. And at that meeting, several questions were brought forward, and it's great to get input from the public so that we can relook at the contract and get any questions that the public or the council has about these. Our city clerk graciously got the questions out verbatim, so in the packet that is being handed out to you are the, I believe, five questions that were asked verbatim, and I'll quickly run through them if you'd like me to.
Please.
No problem. One quick clarification, I apologize, in this packet, it was stapled in the incorrect order, so Appendix, Appendix A is supposed to be the construction standards, that's actually stapled as Appendix B, and Appendix A ended up being the testing standards on both the paint and the beads. The first question, the first question will focus specifically on A.DOT Section 708, and a quick clarification on that, our standards, especially our construction standards, don't normally list all the specifications within the contract itself. It will refer to a state construction, construction standards, and that's what this is referring to, is A.DOT Section, A.DOT Construction Standards, Section 708, and that will list all the requirements, paint requirements, glass bead requirements, testing standards. And that is in the section called Appendix B, and again, I apologize, that was stuffed into Appendix A, I'm sorry, stuffed into Appendix B. On with the first question. A.DOT Section 708 referenced the contract itself, in particular, A.DOT Section 708, Section 11. Question is set out, a general requirement that the city engineer do an official rating on existing painting after 180 days. I would like to know what the visual rating by this company was after 180 days of the last painting effort. You may see, I believe it's page 58, in Appendix B, on Section 708. The top of that, I believe, should be highlighted for you, the last paragraph of Section 11 reads, "The road service test may be waived at the option of the engineer or evaluated for a period of time less than 180 days." That was the case for this test. The engineer didn't see any reason to have that test completed, as there was nothing wrong with the existing paint, nothing. And that is often the standard with quite a few of these tests. These tests are, if more need testing, if the work is not satisfactory, we can go back and have tests done. However, that was the only test in Section 708 that was waived. You'll notice question two asks, excuse me, I'll go ahead and I'll read it. There's also a section in 708, 708.2.01E-1, talks about the colors that are used in street painting and tested against federal standards. I'm wondering if the city did test, did test these colors that were used against the federal test standards on this last painting. If you turn to Appendix A, and I've actually highlighted that test standard for you, it refers, Section 708-1 refers to a federal test standard 595B, and the color is 33538, and as you can see, that test did pass that standard. There are two sheets in Appendix A, both for the yellow paint and for the white paint, and so you can see it passed in both times, obviously for a different color for each. On to question three. Question three reads, just in general, what other tests did the city run to ensure the quality of paint used in the striping and the contract with this company met the provisions of A.DOT 708 during the past 12 months? Again, if you turn to Appendix A and look at all the other tests that were completed, the color test is just one of the many tests completed on that page, all per ASTM standards, which is a federal standard for testing this material. On to question four, which I believe, I believe was the majority question. Finally, the contract itself specifies in Section 821, specific, 21 specific streets. So, I can clarify my understanding of Section 8. First, are these the only streets in which striping will occur? Second, some of these streets appear, and I may be wrong about this, who have been very recently painted. Does this contract anticipate repainting the very recently painted streets? That's correct. The contract actually, this is a biannual striping, so all of our city streets get striped twice a year. Every six months, we'll come back, we'll re-stripe the same, the same streets every six months. Those 21 city streets, and this is again going into question five, so I'll jump into question five, which asks, are there any other streets that were left off? To the best of staff's knowledge, those 21 city streets are the only city streets that have striping. If there is anything we did miss, we'll gladly look at it, or if there's anything that the council or a member of the public believes that we should look at striping, we can consider that and look at whether or not striping is warranted on, on any given street. But as of right now, those 21 city streets are all that's listed. If you're interested, Appendix C, which should be the second to last page, is a map of all 21 of those city streets. As you can see, it's all the collector's streets within the city, and the question, I believe, refers to, you know, were these streets just striped? And that is correct, it was not very long ago. As I stated, they're striped every six months, and so renewing the contract would allow us to redo the striping approximately six months from the last time the streets were That's all I have, unless council or public has any other questions.
Thank you for this.
Do we have any extras?
Uh, no.
So, this is a lot of work, and I wish to tell you, us, tell you that we do appreciate your work.
Thank you very much.
Questions from the council on this? Thank you.
I can sleep a lot better now knowing that yellow is yellow. Mine is mine. I'm good.
All right. Any comments from the public?
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Council, Bob Alafant, 330 Desperado Drive, Cottonwood, Arizona. First of all, I appreciate receiving the information from the city regarding the striping that has been done or is planned. I do wonder, as a different, slightly different question, what policy the city council is regarding public striping, or if there is a policy somewhere about public striping. For example, when does the city put a stripe between two streets as a walkway? When does the city stripe these streets up in Cottonwood Ranch? I hear the six months, six months, but possibly some of those streets were not selected, although I've looked at them, they're all beautifully painted right now, as far as I can tell. But is there a written policy regarding when the city decides to paint strips between sidewalks, for example, on busy streets or at stop signs on streets? In some places, they are painted, in other places, they are not. So, if there is a policy, that would be useful for some of us to know. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for your comments. Okay, item... Okay, item, did you have a comment?
Oh, I was wondering if the council might add a comment.
Oh, well, do you have?
Please do.
Yes, do you, do we have, I don't think we have a policy that I know of, or do we? Staff does.
We don't have our own city policy. We use federal standards. And if there's, as I mentioned, if there's any specific instance in which a council member or a member of the public would like to see a crosswalk installed, we, there are federal studies. Ashdo is the, the division of federal highways, and they put together studies to, so staff can determine whether a crosswalk is warranted, whether a double stripe is warranted, single stripe, no stripe at all is warranted. As you've probably noticed, most residential streets don't have city striping, and that's for a reason. That's very common among residential streets. You'll notice that there's not a crosswalk at every intersection in town. And there are warrants. So if there is, again, a specific instance where we'd like to look at installing a crosswalk, we can do that. So yes, there are federal standards that we have adopted.
Federal standards and federal policies. Council, is that, does that work for you, going by the federal standards? Or do you think that we should have a city policy?
I don't think it's necessary we have a federal policy.
Okay.
Standard.
But we do, we do have a policy to answer the question.
And there aren't, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Delling?
From what I, you know, from my experience, normally, when a street is designed and laid out, the requirements for striping are usually established at that point, you know? Given the type of street it is and its use and intended service level, usually you would, you know, the city engineering department at that point would, would say, here's what you have to stripe it as. So just because it, normally the stripes are there for a reason that, you know, as far as I know and in my, in my experience, you know, doing that type of work. There's usually not a willy-nilly, we'll just put a stripe here and there. There's usually, like Mr. Scott said, there's usually a warrant for it or something like that. There should be a stripe.
And just to reiterate, if there's anyone, any member of the public, our television public or our public here, if you think there's someplace else that needs striped, you would get ahold of Mr. Scott at 634-8. Okay, so 340-2778, or by email at mscott@cottonwoodaz.gov. Okay, all right.
Madam Mayor, just to add to that, there's probably very few cities that actually have policies, other than they follow the federal standards.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is the consent agenda. There are no items. And we have.
I need a motion.
Oh, sorry about that. Do you want, need a motion? Yes, Mr. Horton?
Oh, Madam Mayor, I think that was an unfinished business item, the striping contract that council tabled in the last meeting.
So I need to, I need to do, okay. So, yes, let me get my. I goofed up my, I goofed up my iPad, my document, because I did OCR on it, and somehow I don't have the pages anymore of where, that I could just push the button and I'll end up at the item. So that's sort of why I'm running around on here. But if I could entertain a motion from a council member, Mr. Delling?
I move to approve the renewal of the existing contract with Traffic Safety Incorporated for a one-year extension.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Delling made the motion, council member Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, new business. The following items are for council consideration and possible legal action. Item number one is award of bid for the renovation and ADA Americans with Disability Act upgrades of the Old Town Jail located at 1101 North Main Street. Mr. Man Japan?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is a request for approval to award the bid.
Excuse me.
For this project. This is, be a renovation of the Old Town Jail. Lot of deferred maintenance items and ADA upgrades in the facility itself, with the intent of making it presentable and leasable for whatever function may, may be able to put in there. Right now, what we're looking at is ADA upgrades to the bathroom. It severely needs it, if you've ever been in there. The entryway door is fine, but there's a couple other doorways within the building that need to be enlarged and improved to meet ADA upgrade standards. Also, we'll be replacing the roof, it desperately needs it. Repairing the chimney on the top, it's falling apart, the mortar's working out. We'll do that. There's some fascia board that needs to be replaced around the, again, mostly deferred maintenance items that, you know, just haven't been done over the past 30 or 40 years. And then we'd be adding a patio around the backside, again, for future use. We tried to minimize the impact by keeping it very low. I did include some drawings in the packet. I apologize if it tended to screw up the iPad and how it reads the documents. I'm still trying to figure out what I can present and have you all read it correctly. It's pretty much straightforward. The low bidder, we put out for regular bid, the low bidder for the job was a firm, J.E. Bowen Construction, they're out of Mesa, and they were the low bidder you do have in the packet. The bid tab with all the other bids that came in, as well as the entire detailed bid documents supplied by Bowen. You know, they were, they were the low, but there were a couple other ones that were fairly close, so I feel comfortable with their numbers. Did do, since we haven't worked with them before, did do the background check and called along, called around to references they provided, as well as some others. And, you know, we're fine with that. Otherwise, it's pretty much set to go. I don't know if there's any other additional information I can provide you, if you've got any questions on what we're doing. We do have some lead and asbestos abatement that we'll be doing. I have a proposal for that, and I did mention that it would be less than $5,000. Part of that is the scope is not fully defined until we get in there with the contractor and he tells us exactly how much he needs to have removed to do his work. So it's a little bit, it can move a little bit. His price is based on a certain square footage assumption. It may tweak a little bit once and we get in there. But they've come up, they've looked at it, I've identified what we're doing, they've seen the drawings, so they have a pretty good idea what they're getting into. We have, you know, lead paint all throughout the building, basically anywhere you see white paint, that's lead paint. Or we also have asbestos mostly in the plaster on the walls. And we're going to be cutting the opening to go into the back room where the jail cells are, so there's asbestos in the plaster. But we're trying to avoid getting too close to the mural that's on the wall in there. So we'll be working with the contractor to minimize how far back he has to put in order to do the openings. But again, that'll have to be done as a separate contract for the asbestos abatement. Otherwise, it's a pretty straightforward project. Can't think of anything else right off the top of my head to add to, if you've got any questions.
You did, I mean, I guess this has gone before the Historical Commission, is that correct? No?
No.
Well, we took it a while ago, it was presented as a, like a sample project.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't present at the meeting, I'm really sorry. You're correct. It has, it has gone before. I apologize.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's, I had made the suggestion that the chimney was damaged enough that we probably ought to just take it down, because we're not using it anymore. And I was told, no, the chimney will stay.
Okay.
It's part of the profile of the building, so not a big deal. It was just, I was trying to simplify things from a construction point of view. But otherwise, we're not changing the shape of the outside of the building, we're not even changing, you know, the look of the front of the building. We are, there's one window on this right-hand side where there's an existing swamp cooler hanging out there, that's going to get turned into an exit door that'll go out and go around to the back patio. I don't know if you've ever been out there, but if you go out there in the summertime when the trees are all leafed out, it's in shade practically all afternoon in the back there. And you have the irrigation ditch dropping into the underground piping there, so it sounds like a waterfall going the whole time. So it'll be a great location for somebody to set up some kind of an area where you could be sitting outside there.
And then I guess you won't be changing, I mean, I always, and I know that, that historical preservation folks don't like, like me when I say this, but I always just wish that it could all look like one building instead of the bricks, you know? But I know that.
If you look on the drawings, we do have it on there as a mortar wash over those bricks.
So I didn't know what mortar wash was.
It'll, change it to more of a gray color.
Yeah.
And smooth it out a little bit, so it doesn't look like individual, it's actually like a slump block that's there now, that orange slump block.
Mm-hmm.
It'll tend to blend it in and kind of gray it out a little bit.
Okay.
If we get it up, we get it done, and we don't particularly like the look of it, it can always be painted. And we can paint it with a color that'll go with the brick, right, or the stone work on the front. But right now, we're thinking the wash would be enough just to kind of gray it out so it doesn't look as obvious in addition, even though it is an addition.
Right.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Hartz.
When this was taken to the Historic Preservation Commission, we also had the folks from the State Historic Preservation Office here, and they were able to comment on this project as well.
And I think I was at that meeting.
Even, even the slump represents.
I know. I heard it.
Yeah.
It's, it's historic and it can't be changed.
Yeah. Everything that we're planning to do is, is consistent with maintaining its, its historic integrity, so.
I mean, you'll be able to tell that it's still slump block, I mean, you don't get, it isn't smooth or anything like that. It just kind of grays it all out in a plane. I've seen other walls done like this, and it ends up looking really good. It still looks, you still get the texture of the old block.
I know it's really late in the game, and.
Mr. Ilinski.
I know you hate this, but is there not like.
We haven't done it yet, so it's not too late.
Isn't there a low-profile, like a lick-and-stick cultured stone you could put on there that would, that would, I know it wouldn't plane out exactly right with the existing stone, but it seems like that might be an alternative.
Uh, we could.
And he's the chair of that commission.
I apologize, I wasn't there, I was actually in California when that meeting was there, but I, I did read the minutes on it, and it seemed like it went.
You know, and that may be something we'd want to look at, because that may actually impact the historical integrity, because, again, that slump block represents a period in, in history that now becomes a historical piece of the building.
Yeah.
And to put the, the slump block on it may take away from that historic period. That would be something we could check with the State Historic Office.
We could ask them. I mean, my concern would be, I've yet to see a good set of that.
Lick-and-stick.
That will match, because the texture on the existing is so deep. You know, that's real river stone, and the mortar is, you know, set back an inch and a half, two inches, in some cases. The other thing is, there is a plane issue. You go down there and look at it, the slump block, front of the slump block lines up with the very front of the stone.
Right.
So you stick anything on the slump block, now you're going to be way in front of the existing stone. I mean, doing the mortar wash is not going to eliminate any future options. We could try that and see how it looks.
Right.
And then if everyone has complete heart attack over it, we could then look at supplementals. But we do have that plane issue, and again, that, the stone that is there is so deep, the mortar is set so well in there, you're never going to get a similar look. You're almost better off keeping a contrasting look, in my opinion, not historic condition. But it would just be that, if, you know, trying to match will look more like more of a mist than just keeping it separate. I mean, I love the deep stone that's in there right now, but even that, if you walk around, you can see where over the years, the windows have been modified.
Right.
You know, the, the little windows that are in the jail part in the back room were obviously a lot bigger windows at some point, and they filled it in.
Mm.
And you can tell because the stone's not quite the same, and the mortar is really not the same.
Right.
So that whole building has evolved over the years. And I'm just trying to make sure that we make it presentable, make it legal, without modifying it, you know, too much.
Yeah.
I mean, if you want, I can bring the drawings back.
No, I, I, I agree with you. I think it would probably look more atrocious than the slump block at this point.
Yeah, I mean, we've gotten away with it, like on the rec center and stuff where we did that, but it wasn't adjacent to anything else. You didn't have something right next to it to compare it to.
Yeah.
This would be literally butting up against each other.
Yeah.
All right, well, I think we've waited long enough for the project. I mean, it's been on the books for a long time now, so I think it's time to move on.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do have a comment here. Under the justification and benefit issues, after it describes the, to bring the old jail up to ADA and building codes, and that's all fine and great, and I don't have a problem with that. And it says here, to allow it to be leased out for possible retail use, and, you know, in a lot of ways, I'd hate to see the business, the city going to the business of being a landlord and going into competition with the private sector. And I would hope that when the time comes to move someone in here, that we give greater consideration to nonprofits and such, to occupy that building. I just have a problem with providing competition to the private sector when it comes to retail and such. That'll come at a future date, I'm sure.
I guess the other way to look at it is that you are providing an opportunity for a business to have a business. It's kind of the way I look at it, but I understand your point.
And as far as the project's concerned and what I'm doing, that decision doesn't have to be made now. This, we would do this no matter who, what type of business we're dealing with. We're just trying to make it presentable, and there's obviously some electrical and ADA and all those kind of upgrades that have to be done before you can get anybody in.
I agree with you. I agree. I just thought I'd.
There's time to.
Express my feelings on that issue right there.
Okay.
As far as the work and such, I'm okay with that.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments. Any other comments by council members? Mr. Ilinski?
Just that I'm really excited that we're doing this, and I'm glad to see the city of Cottonwood taking care of its older buildings. I appreciate the support.
And I did have to promise Howard I'd do nothing to damage his cactus right on the front.
Thank you.
It blooms so well.
I know, those, I mean, it's just, it's just such a neat place. And just looking at it, and it's photographed all the time, and it's just a very unique, wonderful little building, and a unique, wonderful little location.
And it'll be a nice anchor to that end of Old Town. It was a draw to get more people down there. And between the different parking lots and stuff we're doing, there's going to be plenty of parking down there.
Mm-hmm.
And then you're right there at the entrance to the park and everything else. I wish I could come up with a business that might work in there, because it's a great location.
And that'll be something, I mean, Mr. Howdegy's feelings, and that'll be something we should put on a future agenda to see how the rest of the council feels and where we want to go from here, and what some solutions might be if the rest of the council feels the same way, or maybe the council doesn't. But since it's not on the agenda, I guess we can't really talk about it.
Yeah. I mean, the size, it's not a very big building, so it's going to be kind of self-limiting on the type of businesses that can go in there. You're not going to have room for a full kitchen or anything like that, so it's going to be limited on what can go in there. I'd like to see some kind of business go in that can take advantage of that back patio, because in the middle of the summer, it is really nice out there.
That would be nice. Okay, so I guess what we need is a motion. Are there any comments from the public on this item? If not, Mr. Pratt?
I move to award the bid for the renovation and ADA upgrades of the Old Town Jail to J.E. Bowen Construction, LLC, in the amount of $50,600, subject to final review and approval of the construction contract by the city attorney.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion. Mr. Delling, did you second it?
I hope so.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item is amended service agreement with Smart Works Plus for phased retirement services. And we have Ms. Dobler here with us today.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Hopefully, this will be short and sweet. We are requesting that the council approve this amended service agreement that's been in effect since April 6th of 2010. There are just a couple of changes that our legal counsel, Mr. Horton, suggested and recommended to update and bring it to current standards of the law. And those two are the Legal Workers, Illegal Arizona Workers Act, which is on page two, Section 2E, and the prohibition on doing business with Sudan and Iran, which is on page eight, Section 22. And the suggested motion would be to amend the, or I'm sorry, to approve the amended service agreement with Smart Works Plus for the phased retirement services.
Okay. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, this, this seems like it's an obvious one, I was going to use another phrase, and I didn't. Because we need to be in line with legalities. If we're not, it's not a good thing. And that's really what it does, right? It makes it abide by the law.
Right. It's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
It's a no-brainer.
Very good, Ken, Vice Mayor. I was avoiding that.
On this contract...
You're teaching him your favorite phrase.
Right. On this contract, because I was comparing the next item with this one, do I understand that this business covers, they cover the workman's comp?
Yes, because the people that work for them are their employees. The city is kind of contracting with them.
Okay. But the next company, we cover the unemployed, or the workman's comp, is, did I understand that correctly?
I don't think, I mean, I don't think so.
No?
I'd have to look through the contract again, but they should cover the workers' comp.
Okay, I just was trying to, so both of them, both of these contracts cover the workman's comp? Okay.
Madam Mayor, I believe, and, and like Iris had wanted to double-check, but I, these are leased employees, so they would be the employees of, of the vendor.
Okay. And they both use different terminology for the city, for their business, and for the workers, so it was kind of, you had to figure all that out. Any questions about this particular contract? Any comments from the public on this item? If not, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the amended service agreement with Smart Works Plus for phased retirement services.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Pratt made the motion. The vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item number three, service agreement with Educational Services, Inc., or ESI, for phased retirement services. Ms. Dobler?
Basically, this is just an additional company that the city could or would work with, or retired employees could or would work with. Instead of having only Smart Works Plus, we would like to add this second organization so that employees or potentially ex-employees could work for either company, or the city could go to either company to get someone to come back and work for us who has skills and knowledge about the city. And so this is just recommending that the city council approve a new service agreement with ESI, Educational Services, Inc.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
On page six, section 9A of, of the ESI agreement, it does provide that the vendor will provide the workman's compensation insurance.
Okay. All right. I, I don't know what I was reading. I was maybe reading about the liability or something else then. And, so thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions?
I...
To approve the service agreement with Educational Services, Inc., ESI, for phased retirement services.
Second.
The vice mayor made the motion. Councilmember Norman seconded it. Are there any members from the public who would like to comment? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you very much. So, oh, we have one more item with Ms. Dobler. Request to disband the city's self-insurance trust board, also known as Employee Benefits Trust Board. Ms. Dobler?
Approximately a year, year and a half ago, Mr. Rodriguez asked that I get involved with this board, and we met once during that time, and the more I worked with it, or the more I realized there was less to work with on it, I asked Rudy, I said, I'd like to put a recommendation through to the council that we disband this, because the original purpose or purposes that the board was originally set up for no longer exist. It was created way back in 1985 for providing and maintaining death and/or accident and health benefits. Since that time, the city has gone away from being self-insured and needing the services of a board to oversee its programs, its health insurance and benefit programs, to becoming a member of a pool, and we have been a member of that pool for quite some time. There, the funds have almost all been used. The funds were originally from employee contributions that were made when it was covering the health insurance plan, when the city was self-insured and was charging employees a certain amount for themselves and/or their family members who were covered. And there is currently only a fund balance of about $60,000 in it, and after the middle or so of April, when some, when the, when the fee is expended for someone who's currently on the short-term disability plan, the amount in it will be reduced to approximately $35,000. The only thing that the money is currently being used for is the short-term disability plan. When that $35,000 has been expended, which I would expect would be within the next six to 12 months or less, depending on, of course, on short-term disability requests from employees, there are no more funds available, and there are no more funds going into this particular trust. So we've checked with Steve Horton again, tried to find out whether we could possibly disband it, and he found that, yes, according to state records, we could disband, or state rules, we could disband, as long as the money were put into a general fund, tracked correctly there or accurately there, and used only for the short-term disability plan. One of the things we'd have to do is make sure that if someone requests a short-term disability plan, that they expect to be out for quite a while. We have to look at what their salary is and how many hours it could pay for, and alert that employee or employees that their short-term disability request may or may not be fully covered by this, since there would only be about $35,000 left in it.
Any questions from Mr. Ilinski?
Okay, so, sorry, I'm just, I'm kind of dumb with all this sort of stuff, but short-term disability is, is what?
If someone is disabled and cannot work, and it's not a workers' comp claim, but let's say they're in an accident, or they're going to have surgery, or something that's not related to, to a workers' comp claim, they can fill out a request and ask to be covered by the, by the city's short-term disability plan. It can cover up to a maximum of six months of, two-thirds of their salary.
Okay. Is it, most companies offer this, or is this kind of an odd thing?
I think more used to than do now. I think it's become something that not everybody offers anymore because of the expense of it.
So if we get rid of this fund, then that's it for the short-term disability? Where would an employee go to get?
They can go, for example, before we had this available, a lot of our employees were enrolled in an Aflac, Short-Term Disability Plan, and that is still available. They can go to that, or they can go to some other private insurer.
Okay.
Typically, we get a reduced rate through Aflac because we get a group rate there if we have X number or more employees enrolled in it.
So this was just the city's own program that it started back in the mid-'80s?
Mm-hmm.
And, Madam Mayor, Mr. Ilinski? I would say it's not, you know, it's not a regular, universal entitlement, and it's not unusual either. It's, it's out there, and some employers offer it, and, and some public employers offer it. And one way it was used and can be used is, is an employee can extend their available leave balance, because if you, if you qualify for the short-term disability, and that covers two-thirds of your salary, you can use leave to cover the other one-third. So in some cases, when this benefit no longer is available at the city, then employees will exhaust their leave that much quicker. But some employees in that situation will have leave that will get them through that, that period of disability.
And actually, I would, I would say that it's only been used for the short-term disability plan since beginning in 2007, '08 fiscal year. So it's only been used for four to five years right now, because prior to that, it was used, as I say, for health insurance plans or that type of thing.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, I can remember when we, when we decided as a council to go ahead and allow that fund, those funds to be used in this manner, because they were just sitting there, and so we made good use of them.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? Any comments from the public? If not, do I hear a motion?
I move to disband the self-insurance trust board effective March 21st, 2012, and direct staff to transfer the remaining trust balance into the general fund to be used to fund the short-term disability program until the balance is expended.
Second. Okay. Councilmember Norman made the motion. Vice Mayor Pfeiffer seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number five is the city council's 2012 vision, mission statement, and strategic initiatives. Now, Mr. Bartosz is leading this discussion.
Madam Mayor, council members, as you recall, council met back on January 23rd to more or less update the vision, mission, and strategic initiatives for the city, and staff took all the recommendations back and put those into the plan, and tried to identify a completion date and also a responsible staff member to get these through, to get these completed. And we're now bringing them back to the council for any further corrections or updates we need to make to the, the plan and get the council's approval.
One that I just have a question about, as I was reading the minutes, we had talked about, our Cottonwood Chamber is working on a regional local campaign, and I, I'm sorry, I forgot the name of it, but there's, there's a kind of a logo or something that goes with it. But what we had actually talked about at our meeting was whether we should, I mean, we, of course, wanted to continue to work with the Chamber on the regional campaign, but we had talked about doing one for Cottonwood.
I thought that was in here.
Well, what it says here under the build and retain a strong diversified economy down on about the second from the last one, it talks about work with the Chamber of Commerce to promote a bi-local campaign, responsible staff Casey Rooney, but it doesn't say anything about our discussion at the retreat to also do one for Cottonwood.
Well, essentially, that's what this is, is to work with our Chamber of Commerce to promote a bi-local.
Right, but, let's see if I can find it. Let's see. That's item number three.
And this, this is the same program that Councilman Pratt is involved in as well.
Correct. Where is, he's not here, and when we're talking about it, it's...
Is your concern that the Chamber is going to take the lead?
Well, it's just that, what is the name of the kind of...
It's Rediscover the Verde Valley.
You've discovered the Verde Valley.
I would like to see us go back to focusing more on the city with the shop local thing.
Thank you.
That was, I asked it to be on an agenda. Well, I heard it back there.
I mean, so, in the discussion in the minutes, which I can't find, but the discussion was that we totally want to support them, but it is a Verde Valley campaign, and it really doesn't have anything about Cottonwood in it.
Right.
And that we wanted to not only support, support theirs, the Chamber's regional effort, but also, in addition, we wanted to do something that featured shop and Cottonwood.
Um, so should I take out the Chamber?
No. No, 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 absolutely not. Take out the Chamber? No. We still, right, Terrence? We still want to participate in the regional Verde Valley effort. But there's nothing that ever talks about Cottonwood in that effort specifically.
Well, there, there really is a lot of, there's a lot of effort going on in terms of bi-local programs related to Cottonwood specifically. And, in fact, Kimber Lanning is, you know, working extensively with Casey Rooney. You know, I can, I can try and clarify this a little bit more, but, I mean, essentially, you know, Casey's primary focus is creating a bi-local program, you Kimber Lanning, Lanning, and the Chamber when possible. I wasn't aware that the Chamber had such an expanded kind of program.
Yeah. You know, again, I had suggested this for an agenda item, and then when we got the committee together, I'd included the whole Verde Valley, and that's still good, but I really would like to see a separate shop Cottonwood.
Well, is, is there something in this description that you'd like me to include?
Well, yeah, there was a suggestion I had made in the minutes, if I can find it, but I really thought that we should brand ourselves in some way, include that we support entrepreneurship and local businesses, that we are business-friendly, because some of the surveys I've read from the public, some people have the mistaken notion that we're not a business-friendly community.
Well, right above the bullet point that Diane pointed out, there's one that says work with the Chamber of Commerce, the Cottonwood Economic Development Commission, the Old Town Association, and the general community to develop a brand for the city.
Yeah.
Which we are working on, that the CEDC is working on that.
So that's in there.
So we are doing that, but I'm just, and it was discussed at our, our strategic plan, that in addition to participating with the regional Cottonwood Chamber, whatever it is, I mean, it doesn't, it's not about Cottonwood, and we want something about Cottonwood. Our council does.
Okay.
In addition to that.
All right. I'll, I'll just create another initiative that covers Cottonwood strictly.
Thank you.
Yeah, that would work.
So shop local Cottonwood.
Yeah, in fact, you know, I was on a panel with Kimber at that last League of Cities and Towns, and what I really talked about was Cottonwood, and there was a lot of buzz. I mean, there were a lot of people excited that came up and talked to me about it, said, look, it sounds like there's a lot of good stuff going on up there, and we'll have to come visit. I don't know if they have.
And we, yeah, we definitely want to be regional players, but we don't want to, I mean, we have our own community and our own businesses, and, you know, we're trying to get people to stop and shop locally.
No, I understand what you're saying, and I just thought it was covered by, by this particular strategic initiative.
Oh, okay. Actually, it really is, to a great extent, from everything that I see and everything that they put out at the Chamber, it's, it's shopping in Cottonwood. But when it comes to that little booklet or that pamphlet that they put out, when someone from the state comes up and says, okay, we're going to include another community here and there, we can't say, no, you can't, because they're paying for it. We aren't.
Right.
That's why, that's how some of that evolved into maybe a picture of Clarkdale or, or something, like, not totally in the city limits of Cottonwood, because Kimber put in there what, and they're paying for it, so she put in there what was really, it's really local.
Right.
People don't really realize where the city limits are in the city of Cottonwood. They don't realize that... Well, I'm really happy, yeah, to have something about Clarkdale. That's great, because the, the thing that, like you said, they're focusing on is the region, and we need to focus on the region also. Yeah. But they have, they have an awful lot of focus on the Cottonwood area and the Old Town area. You don't realize maybe how much focus is on the Old Town area and shopping in Old Town.
That's in that Small Wonders...
Yes, Small Wonders, yeah.
Yeah, and I know Camp Verde was really upset, because they weren't included.
It started out to be in 89A, and...
Right.
They're not down in 89A?
No. And so they got upset because they weren't in there, but, like I said, we couldn't, we had a lot to say about what pictures and what went into that, but when they, when it was printed, it's, they're paying for it, they'll put what, pretty much, and most of it was Cottonwood. It's in that. Yeah, and this, I mean, my feelings are not to at all be, you know, to not think the Chamber's not doing a wonderful job. They are. But I just don't, I just would like to, I mean, go ahead, what is the name of the, the program again, Terrence? I should write that down.
Oh, rediscover...
Rediscover the Verde Valley.
The Verde Valley.
That's a regional effort.
Right.
And I would like an effort that said Cottonwood.
Well, how about if I just add work with the Chamber of Commerce to, to promote a bi-local campaign with additional focus on Cottonwood specifically, or something to that effect?
Well, I don't know if the Chamber can do that, because they have chosen the path of the regionalism, which is a good path, and I... No, that's not a choice that we make. It's the fact that we, the Chamber of Commerce has members that are not totally in the city limits. Right, exactly. So we have to service all of our members...
members, not just the people that live in the city of Cottonwood.
Understood.
You know, when I, again, when I asked that to be put on the agenda, and the Chamber was here that night and said, oh, well, we're going to work on something like that, let's all get together, and it was good outreach, but the Chamber from Camp Verde was invited, the Chamber from Sedona, and it turned into a regional thing, and I, again, that's a good thing, because we, you know, we're all healthy together, or unhealthy together, but still, I was a little disappointed, because it became too broad, and because my focus was on Cottonwood itself. So just, yeah, something separate like you suggested, that would work fine.
But I don't know that if we can ask the Chamber to do that, it might be something we have to figure out ourselves.
Actually, the Chamber can get involved in that, because they're the Chamber of Commerce of Cottonwood.
Yeah, exactly.
They're not the Camp Verde Chamber, they're not the Sedona Chamber, then.
And they are funded by the city.
Yes.
Although, that's a good point. Okay, so work with the Chamber to focus some of this on.
I'll put it, I'll put it in as a separate initiative.
I want to hear the word shop and Cottonwood.
Make it clear.
That's just what I want to hear. Okay, anything else on here?
Looks very good with me.
Pardon?
Looks very good to me.
Yeah, interviewed it, it was fine.
Here it is, right here, after I tried and tried to find it. This was an extra strategic initiative, Councilmember Pratt stated he would like to add an initiative to promote shopping locally and educate people. He would like it to be known that the council is business friendly and we do support local and privately owned businesses, so this is known as a business friendly city. Mayor Jones said she supports that and the one promoting shopping locally with the Chamber, but it has gone regional and doesn't have a name that she recognizes. She would like to see something that just references Cottonwood. Councilmember Pratt stated we should advertise ourselves as a community that supports local businesses and have that as a branding thing. And, okay, Mayor Jones said we could do our own separate one and participate with the Chamber also. So I think that's sort of a direction.
Can't have too much of it. Can't have too much.
Too much shopping locally or shop local, shop regional, whichever.
It's all good.
It is.
And I'll actually have Mr. Rooney come in and provide the council with all the in terms of the bi-local effort, just so everybody's aware of what, what is going on currently, because there is a lot of work.
Yeah, and then you even talked about getting some of this ads on our TV show about this.
Oh, bi-local?
Uh huh. Mr. Bartosz stated that when we do our television shows, we could add an advertisement from a local business that we support local. And Councilmember Pratt stated it should read enhance our representation as a business friendly town that encourages people to shop locally. So if our item could talk about the business friendly too. And I think that, you know, I think that our staff and our city manager is very acclimated to that, so thank you to our city manager who works with his staff to welcome businesses and make them feel welcome. Anything else on this list? This is our work plan for the next year.
Maybe we better get started.
Yeah, see, we actually have business friendly up in.
Do we have that somewhere else?
Yeah, we have that.
So maybe those just need to be combined or something. I mean, this thing is so.
It's actually two, two separate things. Oh, well, it is, no, it says enhance our marketing and reputation as a business friendly city which promotes local businesses.
And where is that?
That's third, third bullet down.
Okay, third bullet.
Number three.
In number three, okay, got it, okay. I've only read this six times, but there's a lot to it.
And it may be appropriate just to put the, the shop local in there.
Yeah, just add something like that, shop in Cottonwood.
Covers everything I think that was discussed.
Shop in Wood.
Pretty good, Jesse.
It's on the record now.
I see so much of, on Facebook, the wood. That's what all of you old timers call it, huh, the wood. Kids that, people that have grown up here and they're in their 40s now. I think it's a very ambitious plan, I wish we had more members of the public to input on it, and are there any members of the public who would like to input on the strategic plan? If not, do I hear a motion, Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve the city council's 2012 vision, mission statement and strategic initiatives with the few amendments suggested.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion, Mr. Delling seconded it, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, the next item is request for council contingency funds to be used for complimentary dumping passes employed over time and other operational expenses for the first annual Looking Good Cottonwood Citywide Spring Cleanup. Okay, so this is on the council's strategic plan, which is Looking Good Cottonwood and supporting that under, I guess that's, is that item number three? Whoops, I think it's item number three. At any rate, there's a group of citizen volunteers, most of, most under the umbrella of the for our city Cottonwood. And as you recall, we had this item on our agenda some time ago, and we've had a couple of group meetings, the vice mayor attended both of them, I think, and Councilmember Norman attended the last summit, we called it. And what they, lots of different ideas were talked about, but the one that, it's supposed to be, I guess, the thing that's, as they call it, close to the mayor's heart, and I guess with the stewards of public lands and, and the, all the items the council's talked about in the past about wanting to promote cleaning up the city, that, and then the Chamber has done. You guys used to hand out plaques for, you go around and look at, I haven't seen that lately, do you still do that? You go around and look at landscaping and give people plaques for that?
No, they haven't done that in quite a few years now.
Yeah, I thought, they used to do that. So it's, basically what the idea here is, is that community partners want to engage in a major citywide cleanup on April 14th, so there's sort of like several arms of this project. It's our first one, will be organized next time. But one part of it is, is that we need funding to, we're going to ask volunteers, we're going to divide up the city in sections, we're going to ask volunteers to pick up on the city rights of way and city streets. And we'll all be meeting, Evangel Church in Old Town on Mingus has volunteered to, all the volunteers will meet there, and they're going to provide the donuts and the coffee for the volunteers. And then Mike Warden, who's the coordinator for this for our city's Cottonwood, which is not associated with the city, other than the mayor is, and council members are involved as volunteers, I guess you would say. Okay, so we're going to divide up the city and then pick that up. So then, we're going to ask folks to bring the bags back to the church to try to help the staff not have to figure out all over the city where they might be. And Brent Deal has offered a couple of dump trucks to haul the debris away that we collect. Also, so the funds that I'm asking for will be used for dumping fees, they won't be used for any of the private, like, we're going to go in and try to, to paint houses and clean up lawns, and the churches and volunteers, nonprofits will be going to properties and helping with that. The funds won't be used for that, but some of the funds may be used to hand out, one idea that, that we're working on is a committee can go around to the different areas in the town, and if they see someone outside cleaning up their lawn, they could give them a free pass for dumping, so it could go for that. So when the, the city volunteers get finished, they'll come back to the church, and the church has volunteered to pay for the food, so I had asked for money for food, but it doesn't sound like I'll need any for that, because that will be taken care of by them. See, Catholic Charities has set up a number where people like elderly or disabled people who can't clean up their own properties can call in and leave their name, and someone will get back to them. Somewhere on here, I wrote that down for the public. Sometimes an iPad gets to be difficult, huh? Anyway, I'll keep looking for that while I'm describing the rest of the cleanup. So if we, depending on how many requests we might get for the 14th to help an elderly person, you know, we may have to do that in subsequent weekends. The other thing we are doing is we're really collaborating with Yavapai County Supervisor Chip Davis on this project, we just said the more the merrier, and so this also, we'll be working in Verde Village, but the difficult part of this is Verde Village has another government than the city of Cottonwood. So people who live in Verde Village, Supervisor Davis is providing four dumpsters which will be at their clubhouse for their residents. So that part's not for Cottonwood residents, it's for Verde Village residents. We're also going to go help people in Verde Village, you know, elders and disabled people in Verde Village, so that's how we're sort of combined. So it's kind of hands across the border, okay? Working with our neighbors. Supervisor Davis is also on that day, if you noticed in your packet, the county is providing a 2012 free slash drop off program. Now, this is for all residents of Yavapai County, whether they live in the city or they live in the county. So if someone on the 14th is cleaning up their property, they can take their slash piles to the Camp Verde dump for, for free. This program will begin March 1st, it began March 1st and it will last through June 1st of 2012. So the county will be accepting only brush, branches, grass and leaves, yard trimmings, all slash must be removed from the plastic bags, items that will not be accepted are lumber, stumps, roots, cactus, metal, garbage. And anyone who would like more information on this can call, they have the Prescott number here, but you can call toll free in the Verde Valley by dialing 639-8100, and then ask for this extension Public Works, it's 3183. And if anybody would like that information, you can get on the city's website, and our packet that we have is on the website, and you can get all of this at www.cottonwoodaz.gov. It's all on our website, this flyer. Another thing that the county supervisor is doing, and this is for residents who live inside the city or outside the city, this is for all residents in, in the Verde Valley, is a hazardous waste recycling event, and that's on the same exact day as our community cleanup. So folks in our communities can recycle their paints, auto batteries and other batteries, motor oil and fluids, aerosol cans, pesticides, fluorescent lights, acids, household cleaners, lawn and garden products at this event. And they ask that each individual limits loads to 15 gallons or 125 pounds. This again is on Saturday, April 14th, it's the Verde Valley Roads Department, and that is out on 4,000 Cherry Creek Road. And the time for this event is from 8:00 to 12:00. And again, if people need more information, they can call locally 639-8100, extension 3183. And this flyer is on our website, under the council's packet, if anybody would like to see that flyer. So are there any questions about our project for the 14th?
You're asking for $5,000 to cover dumping fees?
Yes, dumping fees or any other expenses that might pop up, that we really need something, but I don't, and overtime, like if we end up expending any city staff time, like if people don't, if they have something so heavy they can't carry it and get it in their car, they might just leave it in the neighborhood where they're cleaning up, then we would need staff to go pick it up, and so it would be if there's any overtime expenses either at the dump site, at our transfer station, or if the city manager and I come up with any ideas of something that might work better than what we've already, he's, he's not in on the planning, he's just agreed that for this particular project, that if we need something, that he could help out that way. But mostly, we're just trying to keep it as much as we can a volunteer project.
Sounds good.
And if we don't need all the money, we'll leave it there. Also, we were talking, Doug, about the large item cleanup funds, did you ever find out anything about that?
Oh, you know, I didn't.
Okay, and I don't think we'll need those, but I guess you have the ability to, if we do need them, you have the ability to expend them.
Yeah.
All right, so any questions?
Sounds like a.
Oh, right here, it popped up in my little note.
Productivity for me.
The voicemail box at Catholic Charities, if an elder person or a disabled person needs some help on their property, I guess, from what I understand, it's painting, landscaping or cleaning up the yard. The voicemail box is 634-4254, extension 54175. I'll repeat that for our television audience, grab your pen. The voicemail box is 634-4254, extension 54175. Thank you. Any comments from the public on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to authorize the mayor and council to expend up to $5,000 for the Looking Good Cottonwood April 4th Citywide Cleanup.
April 14th.
April 14th.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion, and Mr. Ilinski seconded it, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and I would like to thank all of my colleagues for your support in this project, and I hope the city looks beautiful when we're done. All right, the next item is special event liquor license application submitted by Steve M. Walker, applicant for the Yavapai College Foundation for an event scheduled for April 13th, 2012, at the Cottonwood Recreation Center located at 150 South 6th Street. Ms. Jimenez.
This is Madam Mayor, council members, we've received a special event liquor license application from Stephen N. Walker. He put the application in on behalf of the Yavapai College Foundation, who's going to hold a charitable event scheduled at the Rec Center on April 13th. And as you know, all special event liquor licenses that are submitted to the city have to be approved by the city council, or recommended for approval by the city council prior to them being submitted to the State Department of Liquor License, who will ultimately issue the special event license.
Right, they're just asking for our opinion, but they don't have to follow it, right?
Right.
Okay. Any comments, Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I have a comment and a question. The foundation really does do a terrific job of supporting the college and by extension, supporting the community then, I hope.
What is this special event?
It doesn't really say, that's.
I don't know, I, yes, please, Ms. Kelly? Oh, okay.
Are you part of the foundation?
No, well, my name is Janet Kelly, and I'm the president of Verde Valley Leadership. And so I actually brought the information on this event.
Okay, thank you.
So that council can have it.
Oh, good.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
But anyway, this event is. But anyway, um, this event is, well, it's an exciting time for leadership. Um, this is our first nonprofit, uh, event that we're putting on to raise funds to keep our leadership groups sustainable. So we're very excited about it, and there's been a lot of talk about, um, supporting locals this evening, and, um, I'm proud to announce that we are partnering with the local wineries, and they have donated generously to our event, because we'll have a wine tasting. And so it's very exciting, but beyond that, it's, we're going to be awarding an adult and a youth leadership award, the Summit Award. So we have our nominations in, and, uh, now we are going through, um, and selecting those individuals that are going to be awarded that night. So we're very excited about it. Um, the keynote speaker is going to be talking about servant leadership, Richard Morrison, and he's a reverend and amongst other titles that he has. And I guess he's going to be an awesome speaker. I would just like to put it out there and actually even invite you all to the event. Do you have questions, Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, now, this is a charitable event. Does the money go, since it's the college foundation, asking, does the money go to the college foundation then?
Correct. What it's going to do, actually, 75%, if we break it down, is going to go right back into Verdi Valley Leadership, which we are a nonprofit, 501(c)(3). The other 25%, it's very exciting, is going to go back to the foundation in hopes that we're going to establish a scholarship fund for Verdi Valley Leadership. We have to get to a certain level. I want to say it's 5,000. I don't have all those details. Linda Buchanan could provide those, because she's going, going to be the one that's going to be developing that scholarship fund. But it's very exciting, and when you think about it, it could go full circle, because the wineries, you know, they have the viticulture program at the college, and it could go full circle. So it's, it's kind of a neat thing.
All right.
Any other questions I can?
Just one other question. Should I recuse myself from this, because I'm an employee of the college?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Pratt, I, I think you could choose to. I think you could also vote on this item, because the foundation is legally distinct from the college.
Okay.
And you stand to realize no personal gain from this event.
True.
Okay, well, and, uh, Mr. Morrison, um, I think that there, there's like a whole branch, well, the Morrison Institution at ASU, I mean, they're just very involved in education and ranching and all kinds of things.
Yeah, it's exciting.
I think he'll be a great speaker, very motivational.
I thank the council for their consideration.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from the council about this event? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the special event liquor license application submitted by Steve M. Walker, applicant for the Yavapai College Foundation, for an event scheduled for April 13th, 2012, at the Cottonwood Recreation Center.
Second.
Okay, the vice mayor made the motion. Councilmember Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you to the Verdi Valley Leadership for all of, all that you've done, and Janet just recently was recognized by the, she won the Business Leader of the Year for the Verdi Pride Awards through the Chamber and the Independent, I guess, are those sponsors, so. Thank you for all you do in our community. All right, the next item is Yavapai Main Street Quiet Title Action Settlement Agreement with the Green Family Trust. Mr. Horton.
Madam Mayor and Council, um, as you all may recall, uh, one of, a number of obstacles, speed bumps we ran into when we acquired the Gardner property, was we discovered, uh, I think what, I was speaking with Councilman Dowling, and, and many of us knew, but, but we now, we realized, were some significant uncertainty in the, in the property boundaries down here in Old Town. And he even sent Morgan Scott over to the Recorder's Office to do some historical research for several days, looking at microfiche and chaining some of the title back to, I believe, 1912. So one of the issues was, uh, that some property along Yavapai Street and along Main Street, it's kind of an L-shaped thing, uh, was, was attached to a parcel owned by Ed Green or the Green Family Trust. And, and we needed to work around, uh, as we acquired the Gardner property, making sure that the Gardner property had, had rights to that piece of property. So once we, we finished the Gardner matter, uh, we looked into how to, how to resolve this, you know, along the Main Street side as well, and, and to get past this, and we engaged, uh, Mr. Green in a discussion about acquiring that little sliver of property that the, we believe the assessor had mistakenly assigned to him or his trust. And, and those discussions ultimately fell apart over, over compensation. So what we elected to do, because we believed the city's right to that property was superior, not only to the, to Mr. Green's, but to anybody else's. We believe it was actually dedicated to the public. So we engaged the local attorney and filed what they call a quiet title action, which is basically seeking, when you have areas of uncertainty in real property, the law really doesn't like uncertainty in terms of property ownership. So there's a legal mechanism where you can obtain a judicial declaration of who owns the property. And that, that comes after either direct notice or publication to anybody who may have a, a record or, or may come in and claim an interest to that property. So we initiated that action. Um, Mr. Green, uh, came in to, to contest through, through a local attorney, and so there were some discussions, and then everybody was sort of gearing up to have the litigation that nobody really wants to have. So more settlement discussions, this time more fruitful ones ensued, and, and we reached an accommodation, which is, is frankly, in the neighborhood of, of what staff thought was appropriate and, and was willing to pay, willing to recommend that the, the council authorized the city to pay before we initiated the quiet title action. So here we are with a, a proposed settlement agreement for your consideration. It will, um, go a long way toward perfecting the, the city's right to the right-of-way, so there's no interceding little sliver of land along Main Street between those properties on, on the other side of Main Street and the right-of-way, as well as the Yavapai Street piece. Um, there will still, uh, we intend to continue to pursue the quiet title action, because even though we have not found, uh, and this is, the plaits down here, uh, back in the middle of the last century, were Alonso Mason, um, and looking for the heirs of Alonso Mason, who were the ones, I think, who, who had the property and then dedicated it, we believe, to the, to the city and the public, or back at that time, to the town. Uh, when did the town incorporate? It may have even been...
1960.
So, yeah, it would have even been dedicated just to the public when the town was unincorporated. Um, would have been when all this happened. So anyway, we would continue to pursue the quiet title action and, and serve by publication. So there would be a, a legal notice published, and then, as we expect, if nobody comes in to assert an interest in this property, then we'd still be able to, to be in court and have the court, um, issue a judicial declaration that, that this property is, um, in the city's name for the, for the public benefit. Um, so that's how we'd sort of resolve all this once and for all. So what's before you is just the, the settlement agreement with the one and we believe only party, um, that, that would actually contest our assertion of the public's interest.
Um, Mr., who was first, Mr.? Which Mr. was first?
I'm not, I'm just holding my hands up.
Oh, okay.
The, uh, I'm sorry, so we're still going to go through the quiet title action?
That would be our intent recommendation. We've, it's all kind of teed up, it's, it's ready to go, and, and at this point, we've done all the work, and this way we can, um, quiet the title as to any of the, you know, as we chain this back to the people who were the, the grantors, uh, who may claim that, that they still have, for whatever reason, an interest. We, we don't expect that to happen.
So, but we still have to pay off Ed Green for the land?
Uh, under this agreement, the, the settlement amount, for him to quit claim. Uh, so instead of warranting, and, and this is kind of interesting, rather than telling us, here's what I have and I'm giving it to you, and I'm insuring it to you, um, he's saying, whatever I do or don't have, I waive it in favor of the city. So he, he no longer becomes anybody who could ever contest the city's claim to, to the property.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I think I own that land, actually.
Well, unfortunately, the assessor didn't assign it to you. That, that's part of the problem, is in the map, the assessor incorrectly assigned it to him, and even though the, the property taxes, the, the prorata property taxes on that little bit of land in terms of square footage are, are minimal, he nonetheless, over a period of years, has paid some amount, more than no property taxes, uh, in respect of that little piece of property.
Wow.
It's a weak claim, but it's a claim.
Kind of looks like an Alonso, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of his heirs.
I can remember just having a conversation with the citizen whose grandmother used to be a postmaster here, who grew up just right down next to gardeners, who said he recalls, or his grandmother recalled, when that land was given to the city. But as you said, there's just nothing in writing, and so we, that road is, that little road, that little street is very important to the city, I think, and it's used by citizens of the city a lot. And so I think that it just behooves us to get this taken care of once and for all, because we really just can't lock that off and not use it.
And if this were super, if this were Midtown Manhattan, testimony like that, this would go to trial, because the land would, you know, slivers of land are worth millions of dollars, and, and you'd have this testimony of what people recall, and then you'd have a fact-finder making a determination, and that would ultimately, you know, determine the title to the property.
Mr. Pratt?
And this is really the most inexpensive and quickest way to take care of this, and ensures that it won't rear its head again?
Yes.
Sounds like a good idea to me, then.
And then, I mean, we create, um, positive community interaction and communication with a person who feels that they may own the land, and if he's satisfied with this and it benefits the citizens of Cottonwood, then I think that I would support it.
Yep.
So, there's no one in the public to comment, so if there are no more comments from Mr. Horton or the council members, I would like to hear a motion, please.
I move to approve the settlement agreement with the Green Family Trust and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement and any additional documents required to carry out the intent of the agreement.
I second the motion.
Okay, Mr. Ilinski made the motion. Mr. Dowling seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And moving on to the claims and adjustments.
I move, we pay the claims and adjustments.
Second. Okay, the councilmember Norman made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Opposed?
No. Okay, and I move to adjourn.
Second.
The mayor made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.